Well, MADA is going to submit their plan to the FDA. And we've sent a resolution to the FDA, and I think I wasn't here on the day that I was voted on, but I'm very supportive of it. And there was a lot of discussion about a larger resolution that would give staff direction on how to move forward. We haven't had a chance to reschedule that yet. I know it's been on the mayor's mind, but we just have so much to do with the budget. But in the meantime, people are making plans, conversations are going forward. And so what I would ask my council colleagues is that I think we should give the city staff some limited direction about gathering information. So if everyone's, if my council colleagues are in agreement, I would ask that the city manager move forward with not negotiating with anyone, but simply going out and starting to talk to people about what plans are being talked about and developed. Because I'm sure UIA is putting together things and having thoughts. I'm sure the office, I know that the Office of DC Planning at times has tried to reach out to us and appropriately the city staff has said we don't have direction yet. And I just feel uncomfortable. I think, you know, the train might start leaving the station and we won't even have been able to engage in the conversation. I think having that information would be very helpful in whatever resolution we are going to pass in our future discussions. So if the four of us are in agreement, I think it would be a good idea to ask Barb to have the city staff at least go and have those conversations, not negotiate, not put anything on the table from our side, but simply figure out what is out there, what are people thinking? So to me, that's talking to MADA in any way we can, it's talking to the Washington DC Office of Planning, and it's also talking with UIA to see where they're at. Are people in agreement about that?
I think that would be very helpful.
Yes. Sounds like a good idea.
Does that give you enough direction, Barb?
Yes.
Nope.
The second thing I want to talk about a little bit, I have three items related to the budget. And the first has to do with public art. So in last week's council meeting, or actually on Monday, I suggested a number of items to go on the reconciliation budget that we could potentially not fund. And one of those items had to do with public art. I just want to be extremely crystal clear about what it was I was suggesting and my rationale associated with that, because I've gotten some comments about it, some people even questioning my progressiveness. And what I specifically was suggesting was that the $10,000 that's in the CIP budget for a public art installation, like the one that the Arts and Humanities Commission did a wonderful job of holding a competition and screening these potential projects, and what they came up with was the steel-framed arch. The $10,000 that would go for a public art installation like that, I think should be put on the reconciliation budget for discussion about not funding, and that money should be used for some other priorities. I'm not saying that we should put, I think it's $5,000 or $7,000 that the Arts and Humanities Commission has as part of its budget and has used to conduct a number of wonderful activities, including Studio Day and help with the exhibits within the community center and poetry readings. I think that money should continue to stay in the budget. It's been, not that the public art installation is not well-used money, but that money has been particularly well-used and has impacted a lot of people and I think created a lot of great activities for the community. So that's the first thing I want to be clear about. And then the second thing is, I realize that that means that I'm suggesting we have to make tough choices. I'm not saying I'm against public art, and I would even go so far as to say that I would help the Arts and Humanities Commission raise additional private money to fund public art projects. But I am saying that we have to set priorities. So I'm not, it's not about being against or for things, but it's saying what are you going to commit the most amount of resources to? And I would again state what I think those priorities should be. Economic development for the city, because while it might be nice to have a public art display, it's not going to do very much good if we have shuttered stores. The second thing I would say is we need to address, do a better job of pushing forward on being an environmental leader in climate change. And public art won't do much good if we're all underwater and choking on smog. And lastly is public safety. I think we need to make that a priority. We have everything in the budget apparently according to the police chief around it. But again, if people don't feel safe to walk outside and be out in our wonderful community, they're not going to be able to enjoy the public art. So it's just about citing priorities, it's not about being for or against something. I put those three things, I admit, at a higher priority than public art for the city at this moment. But I'm not saying that we shouldn't invest something in public art. We should continue to have that money in the Arts and Humanities Commission. And the other interesting thing is I think that there's great opportunities for the Arts and Humanities Commission to work with the city staff and some of the other items that are in the housing and economic development budget. In particular, there's $150,000 for the New Hampshire corridor. And even within the budget item, it says that part of that money should be used for public art. So any enhancements we're going to do there, or I think there's $5,500 for other enhancements in other quarters around the city. There's no reason that we can't have a bench, or a trash can, or something else that does something really creative around the use of public art, as well as suits a functional purpose. And maybe on New Hampshire Avenue, there's even larger public art things that could be done with that money that would overall add to the corridor's development. And then the last thing I have to say about the budget is I just want to reiterate my feelings about Park Avenue, the Park Avenue money, having met with the residents. I really do think, and again, I won't pass judgment on what happened, who was right or who was wrong, but the thing that ended up on Park Avenue was not something that as a city we can be proud of. And for whatever reason, the residents were engaged in a democratic way that we typically like to engage people in Tacoma Park, and we have an obligation to rectify that. And I wasn't on the council when this was voted on before, but we've already, I went back and watched one of the sessions and asked for the videotape of the other one. We've already hashed out this issue, agreed upon it, and told the residents that we would rectify the issue. And I think we need to stick to that commitment we made to them. So I know Bruce is only proposing that it be on the reconciliation budget as something to discuss, like any of these items are, but I just need to express that opinion. And then the last issue I want to touch on has nothing to do with the budget, but it has to do with same-sex marriage. Today in California, the California Supreme Court said it was unconstitutional to ban on same-sex marriage in the state. And now, although there's some jockeying and they're going to try and put a constitutional amendment on there, I absolutely think that's the right thing to do. I think that this country was founded on some principles. One of those principles is freedom of religion, and the other is a rule of law and a set of rights. And I think the Freedom of Religion Clause is about each individual having the right to have their own beliefs about religion, not force those rights upon others. And that the issue around the rights of individuals, regardless of who you are or your sexual orientation, you should have the right to marry somebody and have all the benefits that marriage brings. And I personally feel that we will look back on this time in our nation and be ashamed, just like we've been ashamed in the past of times when women couldn't vote, when African-Americans couldn't vote, when there was slavery. Now, is the wrong, I'm not trying to equate the issue as exactly the same, but just to say that we look back on those times and people in this country thought that they were very right during those times. And I think we all agree we look back on those times with shame now. And I think history will show us that we will look back on this time, having to do with civil marriage and same-sex marriage, with shame. And I think as a country, we need to resolve that issue.
Any other council comments? Captain Reesemans?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would just like to remind the community that on June 1st, the Tacoma Park Community Action Group will be celebrating Children's Day from noon until 4:00 PM at Piney Branch Elementary School. They've identified seven theme areas, and there will be groups at the event for the seven themes, which are education, environment, family, health, imagination, recreation, and safety. And of course, all of the programs will be focused on children in the community. The next topic I had is similar to Councilmember Wright's. I wanted to talk about the budget. Some of you who have watched the council meeting during past years will remember that last year I emphasized my disappointment that the council had not, did not receive the information that I wanted for the proposed budget, and that I wanted a great deal more detail in the budget information that we received. I am not in any way faulting the city manager, because the council has not, at this, to this date, had a session to sit down and describe exactly what it is that we expect in the proposed budget. We've discussed it off and on at council meetings and outside of council meetings, but we have not really defined exactly what we want to see in a proposed budget. I think that's highly critical. I think it's a disappointment that we didn't do that before this year's budget. And I would ask that the mayor, that we do schedule that as soon as the budget session is over, that we do schedule a session to let the city manager, give the city manager direction on what we expect in the budget document, the budget proposal for next year. The other item I wanted to mention in relation to the budget is related to, again, what Councilmember Wright was talking about, and that's priorities. I mentioned before the budget process started that I think it is important that we give clear direction to city staff and the city manager, what we expect from the city staff for each of the departments. Last week, I expressed my frustration that what the Rec Department is doing is not what I would like to see for our Recreation Department, that I would like to see the community center used to much greater extent. I would like to see more partnerships here at the community center with other organizations. But again, as I said last week, I think it is important for this council to give that clear direction. I think the time to do that is during the budget cycle. And I would ask that we include some discussion of goals for each department during this budget, and include them as part of the budget for this year. And I know that we have a full schedule with a large reconciliation list, but I think this is of utmost importance to reducing what I feel are tensions between the council, the community, and the staff on what we expect from our government and what this council expects from staff. I think it's only fair to the staff members, and I think it's, that this is the right time to do it, is during the budget hearings. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Are there any public comments? If you'd like to come up to the microphone, identify yourself, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Hi, I'm Charlie Pulser. I live on Buffalo Avenue over in Ward 1. And mayor, council members, city manager, city clerk. I'm aware that tonight on the agenda will be a discussion of the budget for the community center fund, and proposed in this year's budget is an item for the renovation of this very room, the council chambers, into a more general-purpose performing space, auditorium space, and government use space still for the meeting. I encourage you all to include that budget item in this year's budget. I am a member of the Arts and Humanities Commission, and I was a member of the Ad Hoc Auditorium Committee. I'm speaking on my own this evening, not representing either one of those. But with those two committees, and with city staff, and with the architects at MTFA, who was hired under the city to develop a concept for the renovation of this very room, I think there's a realistic proposal to change this room into a space that can be used for many, many different purposes and become a major resource in Tacoma Park City. So I know that it's a tough time of budgets, that there's many demands. Fortunately, I believe that city staff has identified some funds that could be used for this purpose, and I encourage you to include that in your budget this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to comment?
Hello, everyone. I'm Dallas Bertraw. I'm serving on the newly formalized Recreation Committee. And I want to bring to your attention that last week, the Recreation Committee voted for a resolution in support of the renovation of the city auditorium. I wanted to just take a moment to read that brief resolution to you. "The Tacoma Park Recreation Committee resolves to support the full funding for fiscal year 2009, the proposed Concept D renovation of the auditorium to build a sense of community and identity that would allow us to better achieve the community's broader recreation goals." We've been aware of this and followed this, and some of us have participated on it for some time, even as the Recreation Committee was informally constituted. We discussed the plans for this facility and for a couple of years. And there's unanimous support on the Recreation Committee for this resolution, because we ourselves also have a sense of a lot of competing priorities, and we have a lot of our own ambitions for growing and developing the recreation program. But the logic occurred to us that a priority should emerge of fixing this facility, even in front of some of the other, you know, ambitions that we have on the Recreation Committee, because it will help us build a sense of community and identity, and bring more participation into the key use of the community center, and better enable us to achieve our other recreation-oriented goals. So that's the logic that we had, and we wanted to make sure and share it with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Diana Kohn, 16 Jefferson Avenue, Ward 3. I am also a member of the Arts and Humanities Commission, like Charlie, and I will speak on behalf of that commission. I just wanted to remind you that, like the Recreation Committee, the Arts and Humanities Commission has endorsed, has passed a resolution in support of the renovation of this room. And one of the reasons that we did that was when we prepared the cultural plan, which was the first priority of the commission once we were formed, we went out to the community and asked both the artists and entertainers in town, as well as the various people who were audience members, what they saw as the strengths and weaknesses in the culture of the town. And one of the things that emerged was a consensus that we needed more performance space. And this is the logical place for that performance space. And that was the driving force behind our discussion of the resolution, and I just bring that point to your attention. Thanks.
Thanks.
Hi. Hi, I'm Loretta Kelly. I live at 6807 West Moreland Avenue, and I would like to express my strong support of the proposed renovation of this room to a performance all-purpose space. There are an amazing number of talented performers living in Tacoma Park. I think there's probably a higher percentage of musicians, artists, dancers in Tacoma Park than in other parts of the city. And I'm one of those. I'm a musician, and I've performed in venues in Tacoma Park and venues all over the world, actually. And Tacoma Park does not have any proper performance space. And it's a shame because of all of the really talented people that do live here and would like to support their community by giving more performances. And I love this building. It would make a wonderful performance space. I would love to perform here. And I think it would bring people in, it would help build support for the community, and create a lot of good publicity for Tacoma Park. So that's my view.
Thank you.
I'm Howard Kohn, Diana's husband, same address. I guess I'm speaking as an old guy who's been around a long time. I served with Charlie for the last four years on the auditorium committee, and a lot of consultation, a lot of vetting went into the proposal that you have in front of you, Proposal D. But the support for this goes back almost 20 years. In 1990, 1991, the Recreation Committee held a series of focus groups, and when folks were asked about this building, what they wanted improved upon the most, what they hated the most was this room. And then about 10 years later, during the community's center, long-involved sessions with community members, same question was posed, same answer was received. And the renovation of this room was then included in the master plan that was presented as part of the whole overhaul of this building. And I believe Bruce and Terry were around at that point, and I believe that was endorsed by a previous city council, the master plan. So some of us have been waiting a long time. Personally, I like it for two reasons. One, I like the idea of coming here on a Friday or Saturday night, listening to music or watching some other performance, cheap, easy-to-get-to kind of date. And then I like it for another reason, sort of the opposite extreme, maybe. I'm a sports guy. I've realized, thinking about it today, I've been a coach or a player for 55 years, and I'm about to retire. But what, why I've done that is because kids especially learn the lessons of life, teamwork, how to appreciate success, how to deal with stress, in an environment where there are essentially no consequences. And the same thing applies to performance art. We can have theater here, we can have dances, we can have, right around us, within a few blocks are all the faces of America. To bring them here to this building, to this stage, is, I think, what we ought to be doing. So some things are about money. Maybe all things that come in front of you are about money, but some things are about more than money. Some things are about civic duty.
Thank you. Anybody else? We will move on to our Budget Work Session, and the first item is Information Technology. So I'm assuming Abel is going to cover this area?
Good evening, Mayor. I'm with the council. Barb, city clerk. I guess I'm here to talk to you about one of the items in CIP and the overall budget of the information systems. For some years now, we've been taking steps to put more of the city's business online and making it available for people on the internet. And this year, this fiscal year, we had two initiatives that I'm thinking will probably come before you in a short time. One was an Intranet project with the Human Resources Office. The other is a recreation software for the Recreation Office. I was involved in, you know, both of those, designing, drafting the RFPs and stuff that went out to the public for bids. So those are some of the stuff we took this year. Next year, we're proposing to do the financial software. We want to put the billing, put some of the billing history, payments that people have made, online, so you can go in and make your payments and view your payment history. And that's what that eGov initiative is mostly about. We need to update our database. Our current vendor has made a lot of enhancements, and most of the focus of the development has been on eGov stuff. Just getting more of the city's business online, so people can make payments and register for stuff at their leisure, under their control, and stuff like that. So I'm willing to answer any questions. I think Barb can also help me with the other parts of the budget.
If this happens, will all payments of any kind be able to be made online?
That's what our intent is. The city bills for stormwater and rental properties, your licensing fees and things like that. Those are the first two that we would put online with this. Recreation is going to do something, they're in the process of doing it this year. Not sure now what the timeframe is, when that'll be available. That'll probably be available before this, but that's coming down the line.
So that's in FY '08?
Right.
Captain Reesemans?
Several months ago, I suggested that the city should look at a product called GovMax that is an integrated software package that's, does many of the things that you described, but integrates all of the different things, like the recreation software and everything else, into a single package. I know that it was developed for a municipality in Florida, but it's been marketed and is in use in several other municipalities. I know that Rockville was taking a look at it, I don't know if they have actually done it now, and I just wondered if you had taken a look at that.
Thanks for asking that. I'm not familiar with GovMax. I'm not sure what Recreation looked at, and I'm not sure if they got a bid from, well, I can tell you they didn't get a bid from GovMax. I don't know if they received the bid package or not. The solicitation from Recreation was quite good. We had around eight. I was involved in the selection and the evaluation of all the bids that came back, but none from that, not, no. It's something that we could take a look at. What happens when you're going to bring a total solution in, you're going to have a higher cost, because they're going to be starting fresh, when they're not going to have the data, data entry that we already have established with our current vendor. Instead of adding enhancements to our current software, we're going to be starting with something totally new, which involves a lot of, a lot of data entry, a lot more cost.
Right. I don't know what their data transfer capabilities are. It just seemed that when we have a number of systems that are in need of replacement, that it would be a good time to look at a total solution, that we would end up with a better product in the end that's integrated to and meant to run together, rather than still having a bunch of separate little applications for each of these things.
I'm glad you said that about meant to run together. The enhancements that we're adding, that we'll be adding with this line item, is from Panimation, which is our current vendor. So it's meant to run with what we already have, it incorporates what we already have. It's the natural progression of their software, the enhancements, and the things that they've changed on the software based on our input and other municipalities' input and suggestions to their software.
That's the same vendor that makes Action Tacoma?
I don't think they're marketing that much anymore.
That's the same vendor, though, correct?
Oh, yes.
I have absolutely no respect for their products, based on many years of that product being on our website and being totally unresponsive.
I can tell you, we still use that software in-house.
I think it's still on the website, too, but don't think it works right yet, does it?
Yeah, I'm not, I don't think it's doing what it's meant to be done, what it was purchased for. And I think we've kind of given up on some development of it. We probably could have had, done some more enhancements to it, but other priorities and... But other priorities and better stuff to come down the pike will probably replace it. And we do have a project that we're planning to implement to replace that. I know that we're going to get our communications office involved in helping us deploy that, because it is going to be linked to our web pages.
I don't have confidence at this point, but thank you.
I guess if I could just follow up on his points. It sounds like, on the one hand, an integrated package is seen as the way to go for various benefits, but it sounds like, in the instance that Councilmember Seaman just talked about, when you have an integrated package and you don't particularly like one module of it, what's the ability to successfully integrate other pieces into what you're doing? Or is it, if you, you know, you use a particular system and then you use other modules that aren't part of that system, how much of a difficulty is it to do that and still be fairly integrated? I'm assuming that you've had some experience with doing that with what we currently use. Is it, if, you know, are we broken, do we need to fix it, or are we successfully adapting?
Well, I think they're adapting and we're adapting. You realize the Action software that Councilmember Seaman is talking about is over five years old. And when we first got it, and when the council analyzed it, and the council, members of the council looked at it, and the members of the staff looked at it, it was better than what we had then. It had an Internet component, which the previous software didn't have. Now, we've gone through building renovation and a lot of changes here that probably put brakes and did not let us give the attention that it could have had.
But I'm looking for a general sense. I'm not dwelling on that particular one. It's an example.
Right.
But to what extent is an integrated package the ideal solution, and to what extent is a non-integrated package perfectly fine?
Well, I think a combination of both is probably the best solution. You just can find the best, find up the right components. We, the package that Recreation is looking at is not part of the Panimation, but it will merge and talk to and update and send us the right information that Panimation needs for the budget module. And that's one of the things that we looked at when we put that RFP out. The complaint tracking software that we're looking at to replace Action is not part of Panimation. And we have actually purchased it, and we're implementing it. And that's a hosted solution. So we're trying to get the best out of both worlds, basically.
Want to follow up on that?
Yeah, just, Action Tacoma, after we got it and started using it, it didn't operate correctly. When you went back and tried to get fixes to it, it still ended up not working correctly. It's gone on for, you know, a long period of time. And I think that says something about the company and not only the products, but also their product support. And that's why it troubles me to keep going to that same vendor.
And now hearing from our other IT professional on the council?
Hi, Abel.
Hi.
So some modules can plug into Panimation's kind of basic system. Is that what you're saying? There are other vendors who can, who can plug, their products can plug in, in a sense? Is that right?
Well, we can import data files, text files, that we'll update, things like our budget module, which is still a Panimation product that's pretty solid, and the financial software.
I'm tempted to go and ask, to ask, what platform is it running and what database is it running? Because I would understand it, although other people might not.
Well, I can tell you, it's an Informix database, which is pretty robust, and we've had it for a while. It runs, it's in a Unix, SCO Unix server platform. But it will run also in SQL on a Windows platform.
But it's currently on a SCO Unix?
Well, in our building, yeah. Most of their development, a lot of the new clients that Panimation is bringing online are Windows environment. That's just the way. And in the past, council and the general feel or the general direction has been to stay open source as much as possible, and non-Windows more than anything. And that's why we still stay with SCO Unix, and we have some Linux also here in the building.
Does that sit well with you?
Oh, yeah. That's why I'm still on Novell. And a lot of Novell's open architecture to allows Linux and Windows and Unix to talk to it.
I did a project with Informix once, and it was very powerful and very open, so.
Yeah. Informix, they were bought out by IBM because of that.
I see. So for the benefit of my other council members, that's gratifying in some way, or at least encouraging. Thanks, Abel.
Does anybody have non-technical questions? Councilmember Wright, and that's not assuming that your question is non-technical.
Definitely not, none of them will be that technical. First, I just want to say thank you, because I think with the limited staff that we provide you with, you do a lot to keep all the IT working, and everything from staff and council members' PDAs to websites and financial systems. So thank you for that effort. I do have a couple of questions. One is this tracking issue software. So is that, that's a 2008 implementation that's happening now that's not in next year's budget, is that correct?
Right, that's the current budget.
Okay. When do we think that's actually going to be testable, or?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that. I met with, recently, I met with our communications director, Lonnie, because she's in charge of our cable and our web, web content, web design. And what we want to do is, as we meet with the different departments, or something that she's also starting, we want to get the input from the departments. Our, the software we're talking about is called WebQA. And it's more of a knowledge-based software, where residents will be able to go and get answers on their own to the questions, as the city staff posts answers, as the city staff answers questions that residents submit and solve problems or issues. Those are going to stay in the database, so you can search and query on it. And that's a hosted service. But the parent company is called GovQA. What our director of communication wants to do is meet with the departments, so that we can get a starting point. And what the vendor is telling us to start with is 10 questions from each department. And we want to get that from the department. So far, we've gotten the 10 questions from the police department, and we've implemented them and, you know, tested in a test environment. And in our shop, it works fine. We want to include, we want to be inclusive, so the focus is now to try to do that and try to go live by July 1 and start the fiscal year. I'm always a little more ambitious than I should be, but I think it can be done. I'm ready to go, I'm ready to go with the questions we have from the police department, because I think that little by little, other questions will come in, and we'll soon have 10 or many more questions from the other departments, or that have to do with the other departments. And I've met with the city administrator, and we talked about this. We want to be inclusive and have at least some content from all the departments. And we could even have some content from the council.
So just some follow-up questions related to that. So as I understand it, you're saying people would post a question or a quest on there, and it would be answered by city staff?
Correct.
And then that would go into a database, such that if someone came to the site later, before they sent their individual question to city staff, they might be able to query, "I have this question about how much it costs to have a refrigerator," or not a refrigerator, because we don't do refrigerators, but other, large piece of metal picked up at my curb, and it would search the database and come back and say it costs $10. And now you can pay for it online through this link as opposed to sending in a check.
Yeah.
So that happens. How good do you think that search capability is? Because my experience is, around any of these sorts of databases or websites, that how good the search engine is at actually delivering what, you know, people are coming back with, sort of is key.
Yeah. I haven't done it. Thanks for asking that. I haven't done any benchmarking or really put it to a test. But it's being used in many, many large cities. I had a list, and I don't have that information with me, but when we reviewed it with the previous council, and I think we mentioned it to the previous council, when they approved the money to use that, and when the city staff met with the vendor and watched the demonstration, it was, it's pretty robust. Two things that I like about it is, they've got more than five years of doing this. They thought of a lot of things. The web, it's totally web-hosted, it's only a web, a web front end. You know, people that are used to browse the Internet and surf the Internet will champion it and will use it. And it is compatible with several browsers, because that's a concern here in our community. So not just a Microsoft product. And that's one of the first things that, one of the first questions that our staff asked, because we're sensitive to that. And all the implications and all that we could see was good, it was positive, but we haven't actually done any benchmarking. I think it's going to be as good as the answers that we put in there. If we're complete and we're detailed and we're putting good answers in there, it's going to have that information. Whatever we put in it, we put bad information. And I think part of the thing that we're going to be involved with is policing and kind of, you know, making sure that we have accurate information in there, especially the answers that come from the departments. That's another thing that we were worried about, is it's going to get out of control. But it's totally under our administrative control.
And does it, both have the capability to, because it sounds like they'll be very good at facilitating answering relatively simple questions. But what about more complex requests that might cause a back and forth and tracking that? Does it have the capability to do that?
Well, yeah, well, you get, that's a good point. Thank you for asking that. You'll get a case number. So you'll have a number attached to your issue, and all that back and forth will be indexed or will be tracked by that issue. So if it's several departments that are getting involved, that are answering, they're all going to be answering the same case number. And the Action software that we currently have does that. Where the Action software fails is in not being all browser compatible, at least the current version that we have. And it didn't allow for a lot of that interaction. And the updating and the entering of text was limited. I mean, when somebody's telling you, or trying to describe an issue, and you only have 800 words or something like that, or 800 characters, it's not enough for, a lot of times. And because it's a database that's at the other end of it, if you, it had limitations. And not because of the database, but because of the way it was written, the way the web part of it was written. If you had characters in there, if you had commas, or dashes, or colons, it would fail. This software is totally different.
And I guess sort of a follow-up question, this might be more for Barb. My experience has been with any sort of software you implement, the success of it has as much to do with how you change your work process to connect to that software. Because I imagine some of the reason Access, I mean, Action didn't work, and this won't work either, is it's sort of not integrated behind the scenes with how the city staff goes about their work. And if it becomes something that they have to do in addition to the rest of their work as opposed to using it as a way to manage their work, I think it will probably end up with some of the similar frustrations. Because I totally agree with you, what goes in, in terms of responses and how we use it and the answers, is going to drive how successful it is. I don't know if there's been any thought given to that.
I guess just a couple of comments. I mean, obviously, part of what we were trying to do is to have residents be able to get somewhat basic information when we're closed, you know, at night on the weekends, which I think is what Abel's addressing in terms of trying to build this database of questions and answers, which you are correct, Councilmember Wright, that probably works better if it's a more routine issue. I think one thing working in government is, citizens are going to want to access their government in a variety of ways and get their concerns addressed. So I think this will offer one way for those residents, constituents who are more comfortable with, you know, entering requests electronically, but we're certainly not going to cease to take, you know, written expressions of concern via the mail, phone calls, those type of things. I think one of the things that I particularly like about the system Abel is talking about is sort of the management reporting function, which makes it very easy for me or someone that I designate to basically be running reports and sort of following up to make sure that those residents who do choose to enter an inquiry or a concern into the system, that there's a good reporting mechanism in place, that either Suzanne or I can basically run reports and make sure those cases are getting closed and people are getting the answers that they're wanting. I'm not sure if I'm answering your question.
No, you are. I think that's very, that's very good. I would suggest that we go one step further, and I totally agree with you that we can't force everyone to use this, but I would also suggest if someone calls up with an issue, the staff person should be using that tool to say, you know, talking with them about the issue is, putting it into the system and then telling them, "Here's your tracking number." And the person, that way, the person, we know it can get followed up with, and we can, and if it's a letter, you know, we might correspond back to them to say, "Here's your tracking number associated with your issue." And then we'll be able to manage and track all of the issues regardless of how they come to us. And I think it would make the staff's job actually easier in keeping track of what needs to be done, and making sure that you follow up on all those, the minutia of requests that we get, that I know can be frustrating and challenging, but also, I think, at the core, providing good city service.
All right. I think what we'll need to do is figure what the issue is. Obviously, there are some phone calls, emails that we get, that we know the answer to automatically. And quite honestly, you can dispose of the issue within 30 seconds of your getting it, because you know the answer off the top of your head. I would hate to go, truthfully, at even more burden by then having to enter that type of request that can be easily resolved. I think for the ones that do require follow-up, I think, at least, I think in the past, our procedures ideally were to be to try to enter things into the action system, I think for exactly the reason you're suggesting, Councilmember Wright, and the fact that we would also maybe have a better idea of what type of concerns we were getting, to be able to track some history. And I think that was the other thing, besides just the reporting capability with the system that we're trying to implement. But it also allowed a lot of reporting, just to get a better sense of where issues were arising from, and to see if there's something we needed to modify from a service delivery standpoint. You can get a better sense of patterns than I think what we can do now.
Can I, did you want to follow up on, because I had a few quick other things, but if you wanted to follow up on that, Ruben, or did you have?
I'll, okay.
Okay. I just had a quick question about when people pay with a credit card, and there's something called interchange that we end up paying to the merchant if it's MasterCard or Visa. And most businesses don't, actually, I think for most businesses, it's illegal for you to charge the customer interchange. But some government things, when you pay through the government websites, they do a convenience fee, so it costs $2 to pay it online. I just want to make sure that, well, I'm expressing my opinion here, but I think those are incredibly ineffective and drives people away from actually the intention that you're trying to have happen. So I want to make sure that we're not going to be paying, charging a convenience fee to use the convenience of the MasterCard or Visa.
I think you're raising some of the policy issues that we'll probably should bring back to the council at some point. My understanding is the same as yours, that you cannot charge a differential fee structure for someone using a credit card as opposed to someone who isn't. I think one of the things, certainly with kind of tough financial times, that the council may want to consider, is that you don't potentially eat into existing revenue. So I think that's a broader policy discussion, that as we get ready to implement the acceptance of credit cards, we should probably talk to, talk to the council about and get your feedback. We haven't worked that out as a staff yet.
My last question has to do with the website and why the search engine is so terrible. I mean, I know you guys have tried the Google piece, and I found that to be more effective, although it gives only a few answers usually.
If I meant, oh, I'm sorry. That's actually under Ms. Moffett's, saying if we could wait till the next budget, she'll be right up.
Thanks for the time, I'm sorry. Ruben?
Well, you actually described sounded more like a Wiki than, unless you're thinking of these as very discreet questions. Is that kind of the idea, along the lines that was suggested? You know, how much does it cost to pick up something? Rather than, rather than the more complaint-oriented, you know, there's a car that's, a truck's been parked out in front of my house.
I'm glad you brought that up. It has both. Okay. I'm glad you brought that up. It has both. Okay. You can go in and write off, right off the get-go. Once you establish an account, you can go in and say there's an illegal car parked on the driveway or on the street. And it uses email technology, and it emails the person responsible, or the person who can talk about or respond to illegal vehicles on the right of way. Or you can also pose a question, what do I do to get a parking permit for my neighborhood? So it does, and that's what staff liked about it, that it is what action is doing now, or not doing now, so well, but more. And we're getting away from the CIP problem that I'm here to talk about, but this is all good.
Yes. We're getting back into.
I'm glad we're doing it. The software that Panimation has developed, and other cities are using, piggybacks on what the municipality is using for credit cards. If you have a vendor and you're already taking credit cards at the point of sale, where somebody comes in and they swipe a card, you can also use that same vendor to do the online, the online. It already comes with PayPal built into it. Of course, PayPal, you have to yourself be a member of PayPal, so it doesn't, not everybody can do that. But it comes with, when they install the software, it comes with that capability already built into it. So those are the things that it has.
If I can just ask two quick questions. I don't need long answers.
Okay, well, let's see.
But I'm looking at the, at the CIP, and the out-year FY12 has a line for government services software for a large chunk of money. Is that what we're now talking about that's Panimation, or is that something else?
That's, about five years ago, we made a large investment on Panimation software. And it was a lease thing.
Right.
That's what we're expecting to replace it again, or to think about replacing it again.
Okay. So that's the big integrative piece.
Yeah.
Whatever it may be.
Whatever it may be, you know, if Panimation's not around, or they can't, you know.
Okay.
I mean, that's our proposal, that's the staff's recommendation.
Right. So the simple answer is yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the other question is, with everything that we've been talking about, one of the other pieces is the opportunity that we'll have, I want to say FY10, to piggyback on the county's 3-1-1 system. And I'm wondering if everything that we're looking at here is going to cause us to kind of go, oh, gee, now if we want to do that, we have to go, and, you know, that's going to be a lot of possible integration of people calling a central number to get information, and if it pertains to the city, it refers over to us. And I'm wondering to what extent we have the capability to integrate that into that with what we've got, or whether that's just a whole nother question, a whole nother system that's yet to be determined.
I'm thinking it's going to be the latter. I think the 3-1-1 is a phone or a phone system utilization.
And therefore, it's just going to be the phone referral to whatever web system we have, or whatever system we have.
I think it's going to be independent, and we may be using their database, or whatever their, wherever their records are stored. But the phone is going to be the main vehicle to disseminate the information. You know, and I don't know enough about the 3-1-1.
And I wasn't sure exactly what I'm asking, but now I have a little bit better sense, which is, are we going to end up with essentially two different databases? Or are we going to be able to keep using what we've got and do that too by making a link? And it's, I'm not expecting an answer, but these questions tonight brought that to mind.
Is that something maybe we can look into, since the county is already working on the 3-1-1 system?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
I know we're pressed for time, but since this is our one chance to ask questions, in the CIP, there's the library use circle stations. And I'm just wondering if, should we ask about that during the library budget, or is this the time to ask a question related to that?
Probably either Abel or Ellen.
Yeah, I know she'll know more details. Thank you for asking that. She'll have more details on it. But it's probably just the ongoing cost of leasing or running those computers that are in the computer center.
So are those the computers that the residents come in and use?
Right.
They're the public access computers. As I recall, they're on a three-year kind of replacement lease cycle, and I think some of those are coming up.
Okay. I guess one thing to think about is that now a lot of companies are looking at more specifically sort of what's done on machines. And if they're leased, it's a little bit of a different animal. But that because computer power has gotten better, they're finding that for a lot of the basic functions, which I imagine a lot of these computers are used for, people aren't doing high-tech, high-end graphics on them, that the useful life of the computer is actually stretching out to four and five years. And so we may be able to save money by not necessarily replacing a machine that, as long as it's in good working order. Technology wouldn't suggest that it needs to be upgraded or replaced.
Something to consider. Thank you.
And I guess I would have to observe that maybe we're all IT people up here.
Soon, everybody will be.
Which could bode well for you, it could be ill for you, I don't know.
We're the worst kind of IT people, except for Dan. We know very little, only enough to be dangerous.
How about, they're all good.
Well, that's the worst guy.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
And the next piece of this is communications, which we've already started to leak over into. So I guess I would invite you to tell us what you were going to tell us before we started leaking over into your area, and then we can go to those areas that we've already tried to stomp into.
Then we can start in with the IT questions.
If you want to do it that way, whatever works for you.
Well, let's see. I think that one of the things I wanted to talk with you about was the survey, the resident survey, which had huge amounts of community outreach sections. And on the whole, I think the city manager has told you, we've been pretty pleased with the results that we've gotten back. And we also have an enormous quantity of data that we're processing and trying to figure out what are the steps to do with this data. One of the things that I did on the side, and you haven't seen it, is that I asked the consultants to run additional cross tabs with cable TV subscribers as the variable with a number of the outreach questions, because only 60% of our residents are actual cable TV subscribers. And I have some, you know, some interesting numbers on that, including the fact that of those, that chunk of the people that are watching us on TV right now, 46% watch council on a regular basis. And I think it was 43%, hang on, I've got my numbers here, 43% watch other shows. So we're quite, let's see, 43% reported watching council meetings, and 40% reported watching other programming.
Well, we did have some comments about performers up here, and I hadn't thought of it that way. I guess, I guess we're providing a lot of late-night humor.
It is a performance art state, so ready, isn't it? Oh, wow. So I felt good about those numbers. I think that, you know, we have anecdotally had great feedback about the channel and what people are watching. When I look at the Granicus usage data, which has been occasionally not functional, and I've been having an upgrade, and it's affected the data that are available. But it looks like people like to see the council meetings, and they like to see the other programming, and the music that we have over the bulletin board. I get comments all the time from people about music that they've heard. So I think, you know, that it's been a very useful and funded resource that the city has, which is a nice thing. One of the comments, one of the things, I was looking at your packet, and I realized that when you look at the hours of original programs, those are the non-council meeting hours. For some reason, a few years ago, and I honestly can't tell you how that happened, when we started reporting that as performance measures, or whatever we're calling them this year, it ended up only being original programming, not council meetings. So just FYI, in fiscal year '07, there were a total of 225 total hours of original programming. That means only run once. We don't count replays. And 124 of those were council meetings. So, and somebody asked me today, when I showed them this chart, in FY '04, there were 154 hours of council meetings, or as in fiscal year '05, it was 157. Then in '06, it dropped to 134, and it's down to 124. So I think there's something happening. They're sort of getting more efficient with their meetings. Okay, meant to be a joke.
You were going too fast, and we didn't follow the joke.
Okay. Your number of hours of council meetings are diminishing each fiscal year.
Good.
And that is a performance measure of its own, is it not?
Yes. Leaves more space for better program.
There you go. One of the results of the survey, which you may recall, is that 85% of the people read the newsletter. And so we were delighted by that. Of course, it's a longstanding institution, but that means that it's a great venue for getting out information about things that are, you know, instantly time-sensitive, because of course, it's only monthly. But as an outcome of that, we have budgeted for the next fiscal year to publish it 12 times instead of 11 times. Some of you will remember the days when it was published each month, and I believe in a cost-cutting measure, some, I can't even remember, sometimes since I've worked here, but I can't remember when, it was cut back to 11, just as a way of shaving some dollars off the budget. So we think that it's worth doing. And we've also budgeted for, it's normally 12 pages, and we occasionally do 16 pages. It has to be in runs of four pages. But we budgeted to do an extra, to do 16 pages half of the time, or an insert on a special topic. So we, you know, it goes to every household. We've had some issues this year with the postal service, and I've had a number of delightful conversations with our postmaster in Tacoma Park. And I'm calling to remind them each month when it's about to be dropped to the Tacoma Park Post Office where the carriers are. And I have not been getting any complaints the last two months since we had that. So, you know, every household is supposed to get it, multifamily units are supposed to get it in their mailbox. That's the service we pay for, not dumped in a bundle bump, you know, bunch in the hallway, but in the mailbox. And so, you know, I have been encouraging people, as you've probably seen in the status reports and various places, to let us know if they don't get their newsletter. And, you know, there were a couple of months where the complaints were significant, and they've dropped off. So encourage your, if you hear about that, please tell them, because then if I get a specific address, I can take it to the post office, they can track it to the individual carrier, and we can get it solved. Because they know we're entitled to that service. That's what we pay for.
And if we're not getting it, do we get a credit?
We haven't gotten that far. It's impossible to quantify. If I only know one address, then they could give us 14.4 cents back, I suppose. But, you know, so I need addresses if that is happening. So please encourage your constituents to tell me. The newsletter printing costs are going up for the next fiscal year about 4.5%, like everything else. And they're affected by the cost of paper, the cost of gas. And postage, as you know, went up. That's not as big of a chunk. But the biggest jump in the newsletter is for the cost of an additional issue and the additional pages. The only other major change in my budget, everything else pretty much remains the same, is that we've reallocated some money out of our part-time budget and put them into contracts, and then added some money in contracts for some special projects. Whether or not we do the auditorium, which we'll talk about later, that will be a huge part of my work year, I anticipate, if it goes forward. But we also have as an initiative, some of what Abel was talking about. This is my new water bottle, by the way.
Is that tennis ball container?
No, it's pomegranate juice stuff, and it comes in this nice reusable, you know, washable glass, and with a top, which I particularly like, because then I can carry it around without stopping.
Snaps right on.
Snaps right on, you know. I can turn it upside down, but I don't, I'm not that confident. One of the things we're watching for next fiscal year is an overall communication strategy with all of the departments. And right now, in the last, I think, three months, Patrick Brittenhouse, who's our web guy, and I have been meeting with three members of the police department, two of whom are relatively new, two, and we're calling it the Police Department Communications Team. And these are content stakeholders, if you will. And so I'm trying to work, my plan is to identify the, let's say, three to six content stakeholders of each department, and work with them to make sure that they're aware of our communication assets, which is another list I'm building of what are all of our venues, and how do we triage our message? How do we know what's the best vehicles for that message? Is it something that's happening today? Is it something that's happening in six months? Is it evergreen information about your department? Who's responsible for updating information on a regular basis? You know, you all have to discuss your competing priorities for dollars in the next, you know, few weeks here. Staff have many competing priorities of time, and everybody is working pretty hard to get their jobs done, and which means sometimes the communication doesn't occur. And so it really is the job of my shop to help the rest of the staff, the rest of the departments, get the message out about their work and their initiatives and their activities, and make sure that you know, and make sure your constituents know, and reach out to all the different wards. You know, if you read your survey, you'll see that different wards have different usage of the different media. And it's fascinating, actually. So we need to cross-promote with all of our media. We have to choose different strategies for different kinds of messages. And, you know, I don't have that written in a blueprint in front of me. I think we're going to discover that. We've had a great success so far with the police department team. The chief and I were just talking about the other day. He's very pleased. And I think that they're feeling pleased because they, I think they sometimes think that that website is over there somehow, and they don't have control of it. Well, it's their website. I mean, it's your website, it's mine, it's theirs, it's everybody's tool to get out information. So anyway, but as is cable, as is the bulletin board, as is all the other media that we have, large and small, slow and instant. And, you know, I just read an article in Governance Magazine about governments using wikis, you know. There are lots of things to play with, and we don't always have the time to get there. And I'm going to jump in on your search engine question, just since we're here. The more I learn about search engines, the less I know about search engines. We implemented, and we learned some things about Pico Search, which was the existing search engine. And it is a search engine that was implemented by Rebecca Brown, who was the reference librarian when she was the original person in charge of the website. I learned as subsequent to this, you know, your comments were right on. It is weird, and it wasn't finding what we needed to find. So we start poking into it. And she tells me, and I did notice that she had, there are ways to program pages and the way it indexes that are skewed for reference librarian needs, not necessarily for public needs. And I thought, oh, my God, you know. So I found out about this free Google custom search engine that's free to local governments. And we just thought, let's beta test it, let's put it up. Because when we did it instantly, it obviously, it got us right where we wanted to go on the first 10 test searches, okay? Whereas the Pico Search wasn't getting us. It wasn't bringing up, the Tacoma Metro Development was the topic of the jour, and we have a whole page devoted to that, right? And it wasn't bringing it up at all. It was impossible. So the Google one was. I thought, okay, we'll test it, we'll collect feedback, and we'll learn more about it. But in the meantime, we have two choices. Yesterday and today, I've been testing Pliny Branch Pool, which is a hot topic. And the Pico Search has gotten three pages of Pliny Branch Pool, and the Google has gotten me four listings, none of which was the agenda item from a week ago today. It's a black hole learning about this. I'm not a search engine expert. I'm going to, you know, I concluded after two days of reading about it, that I don't know what I'm doing, and I need to get some, another, you know, another level of understanding about it. Search engines are pretty complex, and, you know, you can submit your entire site map to Google, but then they don't guarantee that it will robot all of your pages, or Google bot, whatever it's called, you know, identify them and put them in the right order. I can't figure out how to get it to put the most recent one first, and I haven't even found any directions for that. So, you know, it's obviously a field of expertise on its own, and I'm going to need some help to do that. As I said, in our contracts budget, we've rearranged some of the monies from some of the monies from the part-time because we're using more expert contractors, including our sound engineer, our video engineers, our producers. But I've also put about $10,000 that's unallocated for a consultant. We aren't sure whether that's going to be the communication plan consultant or whether it'll be a web consultant. I'm, I'm hoping to identify that with these meetings and as we put our problems down accurately. Search engine is definitely a problem that I need more help with. And so, what, you have a question? I'm going on way too detailed here.
Councilmember Robinson was vibrating with a question first.
A colleague lent me this book. It's called "Don't Make Me Think" by a guy named Steve Krug. I recommend it really highly. It's all about web usability. And it's great. It's the best usable, usability thing I've ever come across.
Okay.
"Don't Make Me Think."
Don't Make Me Think.
By Steve Krug. And he has a pretty good treatment of search engines on a superficial level.
And I have, of course, thank you, Councilmember Robinson. I have the book that Councilmember Snipper has actually given us two of. So now Patrick has one and I have one. And I also found a website today that is designed for government and webmasters. It's geared towards federal government people, but they have a lot of trainings and, and somewhat dated information. But some of it's a couple, three years old, which is ancient in internet terms. But in any event, it looked like a good resource with some good links. So, but a lot about accessibility standards and, and, and some about search engines. There's apparently a federal government search engine that's available for federal agencies to use, you know? I didn't read the entire site today, but I found it and skimmed it and thought, oh, this is worth it. And I sent it to Patrick to look at. So, but, but, you know, there's a lot to, to know about.
I have a couple of things. One is, I think that, I think that public relations should be an increasing focus of the department. It is, more effort should be made to get information out to the public about what's going on in the city. Whether that's on email or whether it's on TV or whether it's press conferences, I have no idea. But I, I do think that more effort should be devoted to that than we're currently doing. I do have a concern about our website.
My bad, excuse me.
A concern about our website with regard to accessibility. I work at the Department of Health and Human Services during the day. It's my day job. And we're in the midst of an enormous department-wide accessibility effort. And it has reminded me that state and local governments are also covered under the ADA law. And that was now many years ago. And when I looked at, for example, the, not, not to pick on you too much, but the, the PDF version that you put on the website for the communications agenda item, that's not considered accessible. Doesn't meet the accessibility standards.
It's because it's a PDF?
Well, one problem is because it's a PDF, it's a little, it takes extra effort to make PDFs accessible. They have to be tagged, is the specific thing. But there's a host of additions, improvements, and so on, that I think would be worth sitting down and developing a plan. You can, for example, I'll give you a, a website address. That's a, a nice 508 section. I actually printed out some of the relevant pages and then managed to leave them on my printer. Wasn't very helpful. But you'll find checklists for making HTML pages and PDF pages. And I hesitate to raise this one, to make audio and video accessible, which ours are currently not because they're not captioned.
Major money.
Yes, captioning would be a major effort. Would I, just, just to put you at ease, what I would suggest as a first step is to put a paragraph that summarizes what it is as the link. And then a second link to the actual audio. In other words, you change your work process so that when somebody clicks on, currently when they click on a link, they get the actual little, you know, video.
Windows media box.
Yeah, they get the Windows media. That, that instead you work out a way to have it be the summary.
You know, just, just for your information, that's externally hosted by the Granicus site. If you look at the website, Granicus gives that Tacoma Park.
Yes, I, I realize this would be a, have to take some rethinking.
Yeah.
But, but another, I mean, also right next to it is the agenda.
Yes.
Right, which we control.
Right, so we could have. It's not considered good enough. You could put it there, you could put the summary there.
Well, I.
Anyway, section, this 508, which is all electronic stuff is, it's, it would be, if we were actually going to try to be fully compliant, it would be a major effort. But I have a model, which I have a joke for communicating the model, which is.
More humor?
These two guys are out on a safari in the, and they get really.
Can we say this on our family television show?
It's, it's okay. It's approved. The, they both fall asleep, okay? And the rest of the safari moves on. And they wake up several hours later and there's a very hungry lion a few feet away. And one of them, one of the guys starts taking off his shoes. He's got these heavy boots on and he puts on these running shoes that he's got in his backpack. And the other guy's saying, you can't outrun a lion. And he says, I don't have to outrun a lion, I just have to outrun you. And the point is Tacoma Park doesn't have to be perfect. We just have to be better than other places. And then we won't get sued to be, to make it, you know, pointed here. There's a fair interest in the disability community to sue governments to get them to comply. And if we make ourselves look better, we, we, we are ahead of the lion in this case.
My understanding about captioning, and I haven't looked at this in a long time, but is for, for television, is that there are FCC and other requirements. But if you're a small enough entity with a budget below a certain number, that the, the regulations don't apply. Whereas broadcasters, you're shaking your head. I mean, I guess we need to go through this. But I, we've talked about it in the PEG environment with other access channels. Because Montgomery County captions its county government meetings and to the tune of $800,000 a year. And I gulped when I heard that number.
That's why I wasn't suggesting it. The law, the law has a, an exemption, undue burden, it's called.
Right.
A good cause exemption. The problem is that the courts have weighed in on what constitutes an undue burden. And they've set the bar to be extraordinarily high. To give you an idea, for the Department of Health and Human Services, the cost of captioning any single video that the department puts out, Department of Health and Human Services puts out, would be divided by the entire department's budget. And since that is a very tiny fraction of the department's budget, it's not an undue burden, as the courts have interpreted it.
Interesting.
So it, it would be useful to, to kind of address this. And then there's some things on our website in general that are not quite compliant. We should, we should work on, on those.
I'm happy to sit down offline and, you know, have a meeting with, with you guys and talk about some of these issues.
Any other budget questions?
Yes, I do, I do have a budget question. On the staffing, I have a staffing question. It's not really in your daily wick, but you'll be involved. The new system, which we were just hearing about, that Abel described, will produce a lot of questions and answers. And those will have to be edited and put into the system. And then there has to be, and this is sort of a question for Barb, probably. There'll have to be a system for reviewing those. Because you'll have very quick, we do this at Health and Human Services. Very quickly, you have similar questions and similar answers. And you have to not do that. You want the answers to be the same. And it requires a fair amount of staffing to go through those. And as the questions accumulate, you know, a year from now, two years from now, it starts becoming a staffing burden.
I think that's probably an accurate observation. And I don't think we've thought about it. As Abel indicated, he and I met recently and realized that getting the content, as I alluded to earlier in my conversation, getting the city staff, with all due respect for our colleagues, who are all busy and getting people to sit down and do those 10 questions. Even I, I thought I had my cable FAQs all done because I have them on the website. And when I looked at them, I thought, oh, these don't fit in his format at all. Ick, I'll have to do that later and later, 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 you know? What can I say?
Yep, that's it.
And so what Abel and I decided was, as we're meeting with each of these departments, this is a good opportunity to get, to help with those 10 questions. Because that can be part of that agenda of those meetings, is getting those. But you're right, I mean, and it has to have an ongoing eye on it. And I don't know that we have a plan for that at this moment.
Do we wish to communicate any other budget questions? Thank you.
I do have some. I don't know if they're budget questions, but.
Well, if they are, they have lots of company.
Well, there's some, there's some suggestions. One is, I think, you know, we do have a fair number of people in the community who are tech savvy and many of them are tech, tech professionals. And one of the really good uses of volunteers is if you have a very discreet question or thing you need help with. And I agree with you and commend you for realizing that search is an incredibly complex thing. And also something that, you know, it's a, an admirable trait when you know you don't, aren't going to know the answer, to ask for help. And so it seems like that might be something where we could get a volunteer or two from the community, actually, to help us for no money in a, in a big way. One of the other things which you alluded to, which struck me, is the number of people who have high-speed internet access. You know, it's in the 81 or 82% or something like that?
It's in the, it's in the survey in the, in the back where the, all the whole questionnaires.
It's even in the notes, so, but, yeah, it's, 81% have a computer at home. And interestingly, even higher than that, 82 report broadband access, cable modem or DSL. So maybe there's some funkiness in that number, but it's high.
Right. There are some odd reporting things, but still, it's high.
My point is that I think it's, the number of people who have broadband internet access is as high as the number of people who say that they read, read the newsletter. And so I think that that, when you look at the number of people who visit the website, it's much lower than the newsletter. And I think, again, I've said that before, this has something to do with the quality of the website and how much we drive people to the website. And you've, you alluded to this, but I think we, we do need to do and study how we can use the website and the newsletter in concert. Because if you look at most print publications, magazines or newspapers, their circulation has been falling and they realize they need to have a web presence also. And there's a whole bunch of techniques. I don't know them all, but there's probably a good book out there about it, about how you tie your print media to your web media so that you get more in both circumstances. So I hope that we can spend some time on that. I did have a question about, Councilmember Barry, I think it was either Monday or last Thursday, made a proposal about adding money into the budget to hire consultants who would really help us on, I think, what he considered proactive communication and publicity. And I just want to get your perspective on what you thought about that concept or idea.
Need more information about what is the problem? You know, what is the, is it an economic development? I did listen to it.
Yeah, I think as Councilmember, and I don't want to speak for him, but my sense was that he was talking about it as a tool to promote the city. And I think that, that Ruben was alluding to this too. So it, it is partially connected to economic development, but also in the brand of the city and getting more into people's minds out there who maybe don't live in Tacoma Park and some who do live in Tacoma Park about what they have here to offer. Customers, developers, all, all sorts of people who might, we might want to have come to the city either to live permanently or to visit and shop or to develop properties or bring businesses here. So I think it's that concept of figuring out a way to promote the city for a number of different positive purposes. Would, do my council colleagues agree that that's sort of what Councilmember Barry was alluding to? So I don't know if you have a perspective on that or thought about that.
Sure. You know, I think it's a project we can do. I think it needs to be fleshed out. I think we need to, you know, have a, a team perhaps of council members, staff in residence to talk about what, to define the project and define the scope. I mean, and.
But do you think it's something we, you think it's a capability we have on staff now? Or do you think it is something we would need to either hire an individual who has specialized in that? Or in Councilmember Barry's suggestion, was more to hire a consultant? Because I think he thought it would be less expensive.
I think a consultant would be useful because we have many projects going right now and that could be a large initiative. And even just defining the terms of that contract, the scope of those services, monitoring that and dealing with the product of that, which would be printing or whatever it is, you know, would be, would add, you know, work hours to staff time. So, you know, I think that that could be, if a well-defined project were created, that that is ideally suited to handoff.
Okay. Then my last question, I don't want you to think I'm picking on you, but I'm just curious.
Wait a minute, is that the third time I've heard that?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
And I haven't done this with other departments. I have read the management objectives. And it frequently occurs to me, questions come up about, well, if that's a manager objective, how do we really know when we've done a good job of it? And so one of your management objectives is to enhance website functionality. So how do we know when we've enhanced website functionality? What's the measure, the objective measure that we could use to say, yes, we've enhanced website functionality?
Got me there. You know, I don't have a measure for that. We've been measuring the hits and the users and it continues to grow on a regular basis. We know that adding RSS was a good measure of, a good functional addition. But I don't have numbers for you on functionality. It's probably a management objective that should get rewritten into something that's realistic, you know?
Oh, I think it's a great objective. And I actually think there probably are ways to measure it, like number of returned visitors, how long people spend on the site. You can do follow-up email surveys or even surveys when they leave the site. Did you find what you were looking for? Is the site user-friendly? So I think there are ways to do it.
When there's no more complaints that a certain browser doesn't get them what they want.
You know, we're not getting that on the website. We're still.
Only at Granicus.
Yeah. Well, the Granicus, just FYI, you know, Granicus has adopted a Silverlight, which is a Microsoft product, which is supposed to make life groovy for all browsers and users and, and have the full functionality of Granicus, which is that there are the index points that, that the city clerk is creating as we change agenda items, that you can jump to that. You can jump to the minutes when they're done for that item and everything. And my understanding is that Mac users who have not adopted this, and we didn't adopt it because so many people squatted when it was implemented without our permission, rightfully by Granicus. And I had a fit because we had a bunch of people who had fits. And in fact, there's one of them, one of the Mac users who said, I liked it the other way better, so we've held off on that. But yeah, you can still watch your videos, your council meeting videos in Granicus without Silverlight. But if you would, if, if we all adopted the new, the upgrade, the Microsoft upgrade, then apparently we can all be functional. But there was so much objection, we just, we backed off.
Well, thanks for answering all my questions.
You know, I, I appreciate the feedback and I'm really, would be happy to. You know, I, I appreciate the feedback, and I'm really, would be happy to sit down, you know, with anybody to, to talk about some of these specifics. And, you know, we're trying to make everything better when there's a lot to make better at the same time. Okay.
Thanks. We'll take a short break. We'll come back at nine, 10 on that clock.
...public comments about this item. What is included in the proposed budget is essentially one project, which is the renovation of the space we're sitting in for use as both a venue for the performing arts and a meeting space for official city proceedings. $1.2 million is included in the proposed budget. It is anticipated that the project would be paid for through a combination of federal and state funds and a contribution from Washington Adventist Hospital outlined in the Agenda cover sheet is the breakdown of those funds. And just very briefly, it's state bond bill funds in the amount of $360,000. Program open space funds of $442,500. A federal economic development initiative grant of $247,500. And I would note, all three of those actually are secured funding. As I mentioned, I think in a prior budget work session with the council, the $150,000 contribution from Washington Adventist is still a matter that is not yet finalized. As the council may recall, Washington Adventist had previously pledged $750,000 towards construction of a gymnasium. That was to be paid in installments of $150,000 over a five-year period. In talking to Mr. Stocks, a very preliminary conversation, he had indicated prior to my distributing the proposed budget to the council that he thought there was a good chance that basically the funding initially allocated towards the gym could be used for the renovation of this space. But obviously, he is not the ultimate decision-maker that does need to be vetted through his board. So I did just want to emphasize that that portion of the project funding is still somewhat in play. I had actually hoped to have a conversation with Mr. Stocks before this evening, and unfortunately, we just haven't been able to connect. One thing I did just want to mention relative to this item, and it refers to a memo that I distributed to the council this evening. We had some discussions, I think either earlier this week or last week, about the city's program open space fund allocation for FY 2009. As indicated in the memo, we have received that information, and have shared that with the council. Not surprisingly, given the situation involving the state budget, we were expecting a reduction in program open space funds. We did see a spike, not surprisingly, a year or two ago when it was election time. But this was probably much more significant than I think anyone of us expected. The reduction in funds from '08 to '09 is essentially an 80% reduction in the city's program open space allocation. We expect to receive $62,444 based on the council's recent discussion, however, about contributing towards the renovation of the pool at Piney Branch Elementary School. If that project does go forward and the agreement that the city council has proposed to Montgomery County, we would actually only get about $12,000. And the reason I'm bringing this up relative to this project is if the anticipated cost of the renovation of this space is off at all, we really do not have any margin in any of the grant funds that we have. We will not effectively have any program open space funds in '09 for use for this project. There are certainly some design contingencies and other contingencies built into the estimate that we received from the architect who did the feasibility study. But I guess I do want to make it clear, there's not a lot of wiggle room in those numbers. And even if we are able to finalize the contribution from Washington Adventist, it will really be imperative that we be able to get this project done within the $1.2 million. I think, in a nutshell, I think that's sort of where we're at in terms of the community center fund budget unless there's any questions from the council. Is Councilmember Snapper?
Yes, thank you very much. I was saddened to hear the program open space part of that. Because my question had to do with how much would be the city's contribution? So do I understand that the city would make up that difference between the missing program open space fund, I'll call it?
Well, I think the program open space funds that are included in the Agenda cover sheet are actually program open space funds from prior years.
Oh, they are prior years.
So those are, you know, there's has not been any indication from the state or from Montgomery County, which actually is sort of kind of the pass-through, that those funds would be endangered. It's really more, we will have no new funding essentially to kind of rely upon if there is an issue with the project cost.
Okay. Thank you.
And if I can just point out one paragraph here that I think confuses things a little bit, just above the POS allocations for the various fiscal years.
Right.
There's a paragraph that talks about the city will have very little cushion in the coming year if higher-than-expected costs for the Piney Branch Pool, the auditorium renovation, or other park projects arise. We limited our contribution to the pool of $50,000.
Correct.
Were you thinking of something else there in how that's written?
I'm actually, yeah, I think this was actually written by another staff member. I'm not sure what she anticipated. I think she may have been assuming if, I'm not sure of all the particulars with the council's discussion with the county, if the county had agreed that if the cost exceeded what had been envisioned by the city, that they would bear all of that margin, or if there was any discussions with the county about pool costs being higher than anticipated. Are they in any way expecting to come back to the city for more than the $50,000? I think that's probably what the staff member was alluding to.
And our presentation to them always was $50,000 is it?
I think the other part, not to get too far off the mark with the program open space funds, is just while we're talking about the memo and the program open space funds, we had previously distributed to the council just about two months ago, I guess, the park projects that were envisioned in the years to come. And we're starting kind of in 2012 and beyond. If you look at just what the cost of those projects is anticipated to be, they range anywhere from about $85,000 to up to $160,000. I think what we'll see, if the reduction in program open space funds continues, is the city is going to need to sort of essentially save its program open space funds in the years to come and sort of aggregate them over a several-year period for us to even be able to do kind of park projects going forward unless state's financial situation rebounds in all likelihood. That's kind of a digression, but it did seem to be on point.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight during the public comment session, we heard from a number of people, and in total, they gave, I think, a very important vision for this chambers. And it's a vision that I certainly share with them. I think it's, would be a valuable asset to the community to be able to use as a performing arts space. In fact, it was over a year ago that I had suggested with the previous council that we come in some weekend and tear those dais out and use portable tables for the council meetings. Just as the community center architect had envisioned, he has suggested that we use the azalea room as the council chambers and set up tables and chairs to use it as our meeting space and then use it as community space during other times of the year, or other times of the week. At that time, staff had, you know, a year ago when I talked about that, staff advised us that the microphones, portable microphones, removable microphones would not be adequate. When we had a professional assessment of the concept plan drawn up, the concept that we're considering tonight is, includes portable tables with portable microphones. And so it's certainly a workable design. My concern, let me tell you, is it's based on kind of what, where our residents are right now, or where many of our residents are, who are struggling to make ends meet in today's economic world. And they're struggling at this point, many of them are. Some of them are moving out of Tacoma Park because they can no longer afford to live here. And yet, we're seeing the county council considering a budget today and tomorrow that is without a doubt going to be increasing the taxes on our city residents who live in Montgomery County. Our own budget that we're considering has a significant increase in the tax. We also, many of the residents who have lived here for longer than a year can expect an automatic 10% increase in their property taxes. So I'm concerned that we keep our expenses low. And I think ideally, it would be great to do the renovation project as included in this suggestion, which is a $1.2 million project. But I don't think we need to spend that amount of money to have a performing arts space that gets us through a year. That's certainly not going to be a beautiful space that we would like to have. But I'm not sure in this world right today, with the economy the way it is, that this is the right time to be undertaking a project like this. I realize that our cover sheet describes a way that we can pay for this without using city taxpayer money. But the money that we, if we were to do that, the money that we're using is money that we could use for other projects. As we heard the city manager describe, the program open space money is money that we could be applying to other projects within the city. And the money that we're asking from the Washington Adventist Hospital for contribution towards this is money that could also be used for other things and might even be appropriate for use with the, with the pool and the $50,000 that we had have allocated for the pool if that comes into being. My suggestion is that we put a small amount of money in the budget to remove this dais and to buy the portable microphones that are needed and the tables that are decent-looking and functional tables with a modesty shield that we can use on Monday evenings for council meetings. But at other times, this stage could be used, as it could have been for the past year, as a performing arts space, to serve the community and the young people and the many musicians and performing artists that live within Tacoma Park. So I suggest that we, that we not include this full funding of $1.2 million.
To what extent will value engineering play a role in this project? I've just been through a project, it was under a million, and it was an entire building. So when I think of a million-two for this room, I'm kind of shocked.
Shocked.
Although I know shares take, are expensive and a lot of the other things are expensive. But has, this is an architectural estimate that we have in our hands, am I right?
That's correct, Councilmember Robinson. The, a prior council had approved a feasibility study. The city hired an architectural firm that worked in conjunction with the city staff and many members of the community. There were initially, Lonnie can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in 2007, there were three concept plans presented to the council, as I recall, that ranged anywhere from $500,000 to 1.5, 1.6, somewhere in that range, as I recall. Those figures that I just quoted, however, were not all-inclusive and did not include design fees and some of the other soft costs that usually go with any construction project. With the council's concurrence, we expended some additional dollars. The architectural firm continued to work with the city staff and the group of city residents, including representatives from Arts and Humanities and the REC Committee. And they brought back another option, I think just after this council was seated in January, as I recall. And essentially, the executive summary from that option, which the council seemed to be favorable towards, did include all the soft costs and was a much more inclusive estimate, which is kind of the executive summary of which is included in your agenda packet. And you can kind of scroll through that to see where the big dollars come.
Right. And I've done that, but the value engineering that I speak of is when you get down to the, you're getting ready to build it, and what, how much leeway is there in that budget? Is there any leeway in that budget? Or do we, or will we be expected to spend the entire 1.2 on this project?
I mean, obviously, I think one of the things that, in talking to Lonnie, that I think would, you know, she can come up if she can add to this conversation, but I think that would probably need to be revisited, is to make sure the council would go back through the concept plan, make sure you understand what the design elements are, if there's things that you want deleted or added that should be defined before you start drawing up bid specifications, construction documents. Whether or not it ends up ultimately costing this amount will certainly depend on how the bids come in. Some of that's the components that we choose to bid, but there's certainly market factors that come into play, depending on what's going on with the construction industry. You know, one of the things we found with the other phases of this project is getting hit by extremely high steel prices. That's not probably as much of a factor with this project. There are certain contingencies built into this, both from a design standpoint, timing contingencies. And I think the firm did a very good job of trying to anticipate different things that may come up during the construction in the hopes that there would be enough contingencies to cover unexpected events. And obviously, if we're fortunate enough that those things, you know, aren't, those contingencies aren't necessary, then the project could theoretically come in less than what is quoted here.
Would you manage it? City manager?
After going through the fallout from phases one and two, I hope to God not, but I would probably not do it personally. We've had some discussions in the staff that Vanita George, who is in my office, would probably do some of the day-to-day management, working with the architectural firm. She did serve that function with phases one and two. I would say a project of, while it may seem large to the council, I think when you're doing more interior renovation work, it is a much simpler construction process than when you're out digging in the dirt. That's when you tend to have a lot more problems. The architects, usually as any part of an architectural contract, usually are on-site if there's any critical points during the construction. And the city could choose to enter into an extended construction administration contract with whatever firm we hired for additional support services. And that's typically what I've seen. It's a combination of city resources, city staff being a point of contact, as well as the architect overseeing work.
And last question, is there, has there been any thought given to phasing this project in its entirety? In other words, seats first or stage first and seats later, or anything like that?
We have not talked about that. What I, my general thought is, this is a relatively small project in the scope of a construction project. And if you try to phase it, oftentimes what you experience is it proves to be more costly, not only in terms of your ability to get good bids, because, you know, they're managing subcontractors, but you have just the disruption of construction, basically where this body typically meets, other groups meet, and you have it out of commission. So I think I would probably recommend in most instances, if you're doing a construction project, just bite the bullet and get it done. Usually, if you're not phasing, you can get it done in a shorter period of time.
Okay, thanks.
If I can just make an observation or two on what you were driving at with those questions. Looking at the very back of the agenda packet, the back page, there's a, up the top, there's contingency for owner's contingency and unforeseen conditions, 4% of the contract subtotal. Then it talks about the construction contract coming down to a total of about $780,000, then adding on the bond scope contingency of $118,000. And my reading of a scope contingency is you're going to find other things to add to this project as you go along. So there's a large escalator right there for unforeseen conditions. And then there's an escalation for costs of 6% to a start of, in 2008, which adds another 55, fall of 2008, which adds another $55,000. So I think there's a lot more contingency and what-ifs built into this than there was in the, as we started into the bigger project for doing the work that's been done around here so far. And I would agree that the internal construction is a lot simpler. A lot of the difficulties that we had were site conditions, the stormwater piece, the unmapped stuff that we found and had to deal with. In here, it's, it's not all that old stuff that was buried in the ground. It's a, what, 37-year-old construction that hasn't been messed with much. We know what's here.
Yeah, I think the only thing, for example, I think Mayor Williams sort of characterized, I mean, if you look at the Phase 1, which is when we were in the dirt, if you will, and you look at how much the city spent just removing bad soils, I don't remember the exact figure, but it was over half a million dollars. And you go to Phase 2, which was a much smaller project, I think the only really unexpected contingency that we found was where the now dance room, no, I think it was where the teen room, dance room, sort of right in that general area, where when they were breaking through the ceiling, they found a big, a concrete ceiling essentially for a small section. We had some minor, I think even on Phase 1, some minor asbestos removal, that was maybe a couple thousand dollars. But that's probably more the type of things you're likely to find with interior construction than...
And also remembering that one of the other things that this project would address is ADA issues, which we're, we're, we're not in real good shape on ADA access in this room, either for audience or for the council.
Was, let me interject here. Were inquiries made about things that might sting us, like the concrete roof or the asbestos? Or, I mean, did anyone go and pull up a tile here and say, yep, looks okay?
They did send a, I'm going to call him an engineer, to poke around, and he did a lot of investigating all over broad ladders, but I can't 100% say yes.
But confidence level is high that we're not going to run into unforeseen extensions and expenditures.
And I think...
Is that right? Am I, am I right on that?
That's fair. I mean, it is my impression from the interactions with the architects and the various teams of professionals that they sent here and talked with us, that they were attempting to answer the charge we gave them, which was, you know, give us the absolute best dollar estimate that you can give us.
Give inappropriate research into what we're really going to have.
And I think it also helped that we had gone through Phase 1 and Phase 2. We knew a lot of the questions to ask, and we knew a lot of the things that might bite us and tried to hit those off.
And are you Vanita's associate or assistant in this project, Bruce? I forget.
I think the mayor's answer may be the same as mine. We would all certainly be available. I mean, I think in a project of this size, I guess in all seriousness, Councilmember Robinson, certainly, you know, as I came in about a year into the Phase 1 construction. But, you know, I don't, I don't think you, as a city manager, you have a project of any significant size that you don't keep your eye on. And certainly, Ms. George has, you know, significant construction experience, but so do I, just from other jobs as well.
So I just have a few questions, which I think have been asked before, but I kind of want to make sure we're all on the same page about this. The different funds that, four different areas of funding, my recollection is that some of those we actually lose if we don't use them, right? Probably not the WAM money, but there's potential with the open space money or the bond bill funds, and maybe this federal economic development initiative grant. If we don't use them, there's a fear, and maybe actually more than a fear, in some cases, a real situation where we could lose that money.
Yeah, I think that's correct, Councilmember Wright. I think there is a point at which, when you're getting, given grant funds, and it's not always very well-defined, but they are expecting you to start drawing down funds within a relatively short period of time, because obviously, at some point, as the grantor, if you don't have the feeling that the city is going to use the monies, clearly, there are a lot of other jurisdictions that could for other very worthwhile projects.
And I think on the state bond bill, the longer it's out there, unencumbered, the longer we run the risk of...
The stronger the vacuum gets?
Yes. Yep. And there's, there's no saying when that might be, but once, once it happens, I don't think we can reverse the vacuum and get blowback.
Yeah. And then the other question was sort of just clarifying what some of the other things these funds could be used for. I know we had a whole presentation on that, and Terry mentioned some of those. But in particular, because I'm concerned about this for, I've mentioned this before in the budget processes, I think it was clarified that we couldn't use any of these funds to do sort of fixing the Grant Avenue end of, such that the appearance and experience when you're approaching the back of the community center wouldn't be what it is now, which isn't particularly pleasant, that we couldn't really use the funds to do that sort of thing.
I think, I mean, some of these are more restricted probably than the other. The state bond bill funds were specifically designated, as were the EDI funds, the federal funding for this, this building. You know, certainly, I think, once you go outside the actual structure of this facility or in its immediate vicinity, and I, my personal opinion is, I don't think the Grant Avenue would qualify. We would probably need to do some further research as a staff in terms of any type of facade improvements. Program open space funds are very restricted, and they're very defined. It is typically going to be any type of, as the name would imply, open space park-type projects. They can be used for playground renovations, and after that, they are strictly used for recreational purposes. When we were going through the Phase 2, which was sort of the renovation of the existing space, we had to be very careful as we were tracking project expenses and submitting for reimbursement that we were only, submitting for reimbursement those spaces that were recreation-oriented specifically. So it was things such as the dance room. But we had to make sure that anything else that was in the more general meeting room space or any of the electrical work was basically kept segregated from any billing submitted to the state under program open space. So that's probably the most restrictive portion of all these funds.
And I really appreciate this, kind of the going-forward improvements we may need to make to the parks. I think we're all in trouble if the, by 2016 or 2012 even, if the state's economy hasn't turned around. So I'd be cautiously optimistic that open space money would go back up in its total dollar amount between now and then, so I'm not terribly worried about that. I would maybe make some, I have some stipulations, I would say, or things that I would request in order to be supported, fully supportive of this. One would be, I do have great concern about the cost management and potential for overruns and, you know, the egg on the face and the potential for, we think it's going to cost 1.2, and then we spent $2 million, and where do we get the other $800,000 from? And you all have much more of the scars and pain associated with that, with this building than, than I experienced. So that's just a concern. And associated with that, I would feel much more comfortable if you, Barb, were, I understand you might delegate a lot of it to Vanita, but if you were really involved. And I think also, with Terry's recent, sort of taking the lead on the pool, one thing that seems to come apparent to me is that we'll probably be more successful when we have these big initiatives, if we assign a council person to really be helpful and, you know, it's pretty clear who the most qualified person is to do that in this case. So my other stipulation would be that Bruce would be sort of the lead and very involved. And then the last stipulation would be, I'd have very, it's a pretty significant concern that we actually then, if we make this space what it could be, that it gets used, really used. And so I would ask a couple of things to have. And one is that between now and when we, I guess, would put together the big documents, that we ask the REC department in a very specific way to come up with pretty detailed programs about what they would use this space for, and maybe they already have that. And also, maybe we could ask the auditorium committee to start on the idea of what things that the REC committee wouldn't do, but I know there's lots of artists in the, in the community who would be interested in doing things so that we could have a more concrete sense and even commitment that people would, would use the room, whether it be concert series or improv or what have you. I think that would give me much more comfort to know that once we spent the money, this space would really be used in an incredibly effective way.
Yeah, what I can do is, I think it was part of the discussions earlier this year, Ms. Moffitt might be able to help me remember when, but I think the Recreation Department had provided some information about how they envisioned using this space, but I will, as Ms. Hayden is not here, I think she would be the first to say that this was very much a community-driven project and that it was not driven by the Recreation Department, while they would certainly use it. So I do not want to leave the council with the impression that it would be, that our expectation as staff is that the Recreation Department personally would be programming this space facetiously, saying 24/7. this space facetiously, saying 24/7. I think this was, as was this entire complex envisioned, is some of it would be actively programmed by the city, but certainly groups like the Arts and Humanities Commission and other groups would be involved in also making use of it. But I can redistribute the information we gave you about REC.
Yeah, but I guess I would push a little bit on the REC department to say, and I have this feeling about the idea of a gym, in the sense that the REC department really wanted that, and I would still love to have that, but I always got the sense that there was this sort of, if you build it, it will be really used and productive things will happen and then it'll be great for kids. And I think that's probably the wrong way to think about youth programming, is actually to be more intentional. So if we went to the REC department and said, well, this is the space you'd have, and beyond them saying, well, yeah, we'd do some theater with kids, like really, let's have them hash out what some programming would look like, because it is, and it would be a great space for kids to do youth theater, and, and that, that takes thought and would take thought, energy, effort, and probably also money. So I'd wanna really understand.
And just, let me make one quick comment, and then Councilmember Seaman says question or comment. One thing that I didn't point out when I was looking at the back page of the packet in terms of contingencies and kind of some ability to deal with costs, the, the last line on the page is that 104,000 of this is a new entrant bid alter, so that there's, there's already a place that depending on how, how it was structured and how, how things are going, there's an ability to take 8% of what's foreseen to be all of the costs as one piece that could easily come out. Councilmember Seaman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna reiterate that I agree wholeheartedly with the vision. I've been terribly disappointed over the last year every time I walk into this space on other than Monday nights to see that it's underutilized, that this stage is, can't be used as a stage, and that the community can't use this as a performing arts space. I think that Councilmember Wright raises an issue that is certainly been at the forefront of my mind with this space, and that is, will the Recreation Department, what is the Recreation Department's commitment to programming this space? I think, I know that the community is gonna be interested in using the space and having the space, you know, filled with people in the community performing programs, but I think the coordination and encouragement of those programs to keep this space used, maybe not 24/7, but fully utilized or utilized to the greatest extent possible, is the purview of the Recreation Department. And I have been, and I've said it last week and again tonight, that I'm disappointed with the programming that we see within the community center that we have today from the Recreation Department. I think the focus, and again, I, I say that I think we need to give clear direction to the Recreation Department, but I think the focus is on the use of recreation dollars would better meet the community needs if we focus more programming on the community center here. I'm not saying never to renovate this space and turn it into the beautiful performing arts facility that we envisioned, I'm just saying I think this year it's bad for residents to be allocating that kind of money. One, I think we can have a lower price solution that, you know, meets some of the community's desires and wait to see how the economy is next year when we can do it. And for that reason, I would ask that we put this on our ever-growing list, reconciliation list.
And my comments to my colleagues after Monday night was that I thought we, we could manage the reconciliation list a little better if we had an indication that it was two councilmembers wanted something on the reconciliation list, that it was an ever-growing list, so maybe I'll-
I would, I would agree with that, but I would suggest that we do as we have with the past requests, put it on the list, and then when we have the full council available to make the seconds, that everyone has the opportunity to do that.
That's fine. Any other comments? Okay, then we'll move on to the non-departmental one.
Thank you, Yvonne.
As the name of this budget would imply, it's the things that don't necessarily fit neatly into any specific city department's operating budget. On the surface, I would just say when you look at this, the percentage increase is somewhat misleading. I think if I were someone who kind of didn't understand the way this particular section of the budget functioned, I'd be a little alarmed, because it's up by 17%. That is essentially is a function of the way that the unappropriated reserve is handled. Just as a reminder to, for the council, there are actually two contingency accounts that get sort of automatically budgeted. In accordance with the city's charter, there is one contingency account, sort of known as a general contingency account, which is equivalent to half a percent of operating revenues that is specifically prescribed by the charter. There is another equivalent to 2% of operating revenues, which is kind of what we all have referred to as the unappropriated reserve. As the council may recall, during fiscal year 2008, there have been a number of instances for a variety of reasons that money has been transferred from the unappropriated reserve to other accounts in the city's operating budget. So when you kind of try comparing where the current FY 2008 operating budget is to what's proposed for 2009, you see this enormous increase, which is almost exclusively coming from the unappropriated reserve. So it's sort of that money has already been transferred out, so from a comparative standpoint, it looks high. Some other things that are included in this particular budget, and I do wanna address one that Councilmember Robinson had expressed some interest in the other evening, which has to do with the city's financial obligation to the state retirement and pension system of Maryland. And this is the pension plan that covers the civilian, non-sworn police personnel, employees of the city. Throughout each of the individual operating budgets, the current year contributions are reflected in those individual departmental budgets. What shows up in the non-departmental is a special payment of $75,000, which is basically going towards paying off a deficit amount, which as of July 1st, 2007, was about 1.4 million dollars. Mayor Williams may have to be the historian for me here, because Ms. Brooks and I were looking for some background. As I recall, there was a change in the state retirement system, probably when Mayor Williams was on the council. You may need to help me with this. The city did some active lobbying in terms of what the amount that the city should pay was. That amount was knocked down considerably with a globalist filter.
I think we got two different reductions in two different years.
Okay.
250,000 once, 125,000 another time.
I think it might've been more, maybe even been higher from what I recall from talking to our former deputy city manager. It was fairly, a fairly significant lobbying effort with Larry Levitan.
Right. And I know that at the time, the, the two municipalities in the state with the largest potential owed amounts, we were number two and Hagerstown was number one, and theirs was an order of magnitude bigger than ours.
Yeah, and I will try to find, for all the council, but certainly for Councilmember Robinson, who's expressed some interest in that, see if I can get a little bit more history. I might just give Mr. Hobbs a call, because he can be my historian.
Can you clarify that, Barb? What was it that was an order of magnitude bigger? It was the amount?
It was the amount that it was owed. It was sort of the, there was a change in the way, I believe, the actuarial calculations, where the liability was calculated by the state. And as I recall from Mr. Hobbs, the impact on Tacoma Park would have been considerably higher, but not for the city's fairly aggressive lobbying efforts.
And what was adjusted? What was actually adjusted?
That's apart, Councilmember Robinson, that Ms. Brooks and I've been talking about, since it happened years before both of us were here. But I think it had to do something with the accrual rates or the actuarial contribution rate.
My recollection is that when the actuaries changed how they figured what we owed-
The assumptions, I think.
We had been, we had been current with what we owed under the way they figured it. When they changed, all of a sudden, the figure, I'll just say, I'll use it for instance, we thought we owed 400,000, and they came back and said, no, we owed 1.6 million.
And what we owed, you mean on an annual basis?
No, that, that all of a sudden, when they changed the rules, we had this shortfall.
It was a huge unfunded liability, essentially.
An unfunded liability from, from changing the definition of what was owed. Therefore, the amount that would be owed each year was gonna be whatever we would normally play, pay, plus this back amount, and therefore-
To pay it off.
And they were saying, okay, you know, you can pay X amount per year to pay off this kind of debt.
And so the adjustment was somehow making them do a different kind of magic to come up with a different number that was-
It was to basically pay off some of our amount for us.
Yeah, I think, I understand they changed the-
Okay, that's what I needed to hear.
Yeah, I believe they changed the actuarial assumptions, which basically changed the contribution that all participating entities in the plan owed. From what I recall, Mr. Hobbs saying, that even while the number on the paper before you this evening is certainly large, that I believe through that process of questioning actuarial assumptions, I think may have been knocked down more than a million dollars. This is a figure that I recall Mr. Hobbs saying. But as of July 1st, 2007, which is the last time we got an actuarial evaluation for the plan, state plan, we had a deficit of amount of about 1.4 million dollars, as noted on the cover sheet, that is being amortized over 40 years, there's a specific payment schedule in place, and the last payment is due in 2035, so we've still got a long ways to go.
And what the, if I can interrupt here-
Sure, certainly.
What the, the gist of that article was that, as I read it, those numbers might change if the return on investments are radically diluted. Is that, is that fair to say?
I think the amount with the state plan, I mean, obviously they're going through and calculating current year contributions. My understanding is the, the deficit that is addressed by this sort of payment arrangement, if you will, was sort of fixed at a point in time. But certainly the state goes through every year and basically looks at what the kind of current year contribution rates are separate and apart from this issue. I think-
I guess, I guess I'm just, you know, I'm really a babe in the woods here. The state says we have an unfunded, we have a liability that we have to pay off, and we agree, okay, by 2035, we'll pay off this liability. Can the state come back and say, oh, we made a mistake, our mutual funds are producing far less, you know, your, your liability actually is, you know, 10 times that amount?
I, I think the greater likelihood will be that they set a contribution rate, in other words, we have gotten documentation from the state, which is a separate issue from kind of the, the past history of what we should be contributing on our current workforce for 2009. That is something we get, essentially, Yvonne, to help me, but every spring, I guess, we will get a letter from the state saying, here's your contribution rate, kind of for your current obligation, if you will. And that does shift every year. I think theoretically, depending on how investments are performing, that may play a role in terms of how they set those contribution rates on an annual basis. So I think it's relevant to what we're being asked to contribute for '09, 2010. I think that is a separate issue from this payment arrangement that ends in 2035.
Okay, so let's see if I've got that right.
This is like a debt.
It's like, almost like, yeah.
They have, they have up fronted the difference between what we should have been contributing and that's a fixed, it's a more or less fixed amount.
Right, that can't, sounds like that can't change, but the annual base.
The annual thing does, because, you know, as inflation goes up or down, our salaries go up or down.
Or then, I mean, this is all based on assumptions, right? So they could, they could make a mistake again, which would be, they could be under, you know, they could overestimate investment, they could underestimate lifespan, there's a whole bunch of things that they could do that go into the actuarial calculations. And what it sounds like would happen is one of those, they were, they were wrong on some of those assumptions, and they came back to us and said, well, really, your responsibility is likely this, if you look at the age of all your potential people and what the ultimate liability is to pay that. And so that could happen again, that's not, I would say-
Sounds like it could, sounds like it could happen.
And that old one, they drew a line in the sand and said, okay, we've defined this off, and here it is, now let's keep going.
But if they're managing it better and doing it year to year, it's unlike, less likely to happen.
Yeah, what I would do is, like I say, Ms. Brooks and I talked about this, since this obviously predated both of us by a number of years, is I will give Wayne a call and see if he can help me and look back through some of the records, but, I mean, I think the issue that you're raising certainly comes into play, which is not addressed in this budget, but with the police pension plan. One of the things that we, you know, I talked about in the transmittal letters, is really two things that have been happening that are gonna be driving the city's contribution rate to the plan going forward. Certainly, the rate of disability is probably the single largest factor, but the assumptions when that plan was created, you know, around 2000, 2001, was that there was a certain rate of return that would cover the administrative expenses associated with the plan, which would be the, the actuarial fees, the money management fees, the legal fees, and that assumption was right around 8%. Investments had been outperforming that actually, and now clearly are not likely to. So that will likely come into play with the city's contribution to the police plan. So those issues are very important.
Right, and, and I guess we can't decide this now, but the what-if part, what if it's, returns are 4%, and both for the police and for these, these payrolls, we would be well advised, I would think, to have a game plan on how to address that. Not that we can, like I said, not that we can figure it out now.
Yeah, I think that, and I can say, Ms. Brooks and I are both trustees on the, the police pension plan, and that's certainly an issue that's being talked about at the board level. I think in terms of the state plan, we're part of a much larger entity, and I think in terms of the, the city's ability to impact that is negligible, quite frankly. But it's certainly something that we track and watch.
One observation I would make is, my office follows the Social Security Trust Fund. You may have heard about it.
Oh, yeah.
And we took a look at the assumptions that the actuaries used for that, and to give you an idea of how conservative they are, if you looked at the past 75 years, because they do a 75-year forecast, if you looked at the previous 75 years, so that you, and we actually did this some years ago, so it included the Great Depression, and you said, well, what if the economy performed just like that prior 75-year period? What would happen in the future to Social Security? And what would happen is, there would be no problem whatsoever with Social Security. That is, the bad times and good times in the previous 75 years, okay, if we projected that forward, there would not be any problem. You'd never run out of money, they'd never have any trouble playing, paying it. And the reason that the actuaries find a problem is they like to be prudent. So they use very conservative assumptions. And I, I would not be least surprised if they're doing exactly the same thing here. That they're assuming very low rates of return, very higher, you know, the high end for inflation and so on, in order to protect us from what would be a catastrophe if you did hit, hit some point where you ran out of money, or you had to increase our contributions very dramatically.
Or, or somebody raided the lockbox.
Please, right, exactly.
Just a couple of things I mentioned, we will try to get a little bit more historical background, since it is a fairly big chunk of change that's sitting out there for a very long period of time. Just a couple other brief issues that have come out of the non-departmental budget. This is where the city's local supplement to the state homeowners' property tax credit program shows up. $160,000 is included in the proposed budget. This is where essentially, council has raised that over a series of years, but essentially we match 50% of the amount paid to eligible property owners in the city. This is a program that you have to meet certain income, it's income qualified, your property has to meet certain assessment standards. We have seen over recent years that the state, I think about two years ago, actually did their first major rewrite of the program eligibility requirements and essentially broadened those so that more folks participated, so we were eligible to get the credit. It is an application-based program, people do need to apply, but I think that's been always, over the years I've been here and even preceding my tenure, I think, an effort by the council to try to address the concerns of those who are of, you know, lower moderate means and trying to respond to what's been happening with property values. The other large, one of the other large expenditures in this budget are certainly the city's cost for liability, property auto insurance coverage, that's about $147,000. In the current year budget, we have- In the current year budget, we have about two hundred and, Yvonne might need to help me, about two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars for a worker's compensation insurance. So this is, a big chunk of this budget is also kind of insurance-related.
Two thirty-one for workers' costs, holy moly.
Yeah, I think one of the things that I have found over the years, especially working in a municipality, when you have a sanitation department, quite frankly, they have some of the highest worker comp ratios that you will see across the country. It's actually an extremely hazardous profession in terms of those who actually either get killed or are seriously injured, actually sometimes much higher than police and fire, surprisingly enough. But when you look at the number of workers that we have who are doing very physical labor, the possibility of back injuries and things that can be career-ending is relatively high. The other, it's a minor issue, I think, from a funding standpoint, but I did just want to mention it, is the city, for a number of years, has essentially contracted with CASA Maryland to operate a temporary day labor site on New Hampshire Avenue. The last few years, we have been fortunate to have Montgomery County actually provide financial support, and in fact, the county essentially reimburses us in full for what the cost of that is. We are anticipating, based on information we had received from CASA, that the Prince George's County Worker Center will be open by October first of two thousand and eight or thereabouts. So we, in putting together the proposed budget, had approached Montgomery County about at least continuing their support for the first quarter of the fiscal year. I don't think that has yet been finalized. The indication, at least at this point, looks positive that, that the city will be receiving those funds from Montgomery County. So from the city's budgetary standpoint, it's essentially a wash. You've got a fifteen thousand dollar revenue from Montgomery County and about fifteen thousand in expenditures.
Meanwhile, they've asked us for...
Right, and I think that's obviously an issue that, you know, that issue, the request from CASA will be placed on the reconciliation, less than the council can talk about it at that time. You know, I will say, from, from the staff's perspective, which is more not, anything to do with CASA, is that I think Montgomery County has certainly taken, has been the leader in terms of providing funding for the worker centers, and I think Prince George's County has not been making the same financial commitment that Montgomery County, not only for Tacoma Park, but just in general. Montgomery County, I think, as you may know, operates three other really full-service centers in Montgomery County, and then provides support for the city's admittedly very rudimentary site on New Hampshire Avenue. So that'll be an issue the council can talk about more during the reconciliation process.
I think...
I'm sorry, I have a question about this question.
Okay, okay. Yes, I, first of all, did want to laud the Prince George's County government for finding a location for the worker center in Langley Park. I think that's been a very important and long-awaited move. I'm glad that they've been successful. I think to help the site itself be successful, and I mentioned this several months ago, I think the city at Tacoma Park could contribute to that by providing transportation for workers from the Tacoma Park site to the new site in Prince George's County for a couple of months. We do have the city van and the, and the city bus. We could use whichever is appropriate, based on the number of workers that are out there in the morning. But I know when we opened the Tacoma Park site, providing transportation for the workers from the Tacoma-Langley crossroads to the Sheridan Avenue site was crucial for kind of building the habits in workers and showing them where the site was and helping to convince them that it was to their advantage to use the worker site on Sheridan Avenue. And now that we're, you know, now that there's a better facility available in Prince George's County, I think it's just as crucial that we provide transportation to the workers for a period of time to, again, develop the habits and expose them to the better facility that's available. So I don't, I don't know if we have, if that's something that would have to be a funded initiative, or if that's something that we can do with the projections that you have in this budget.
My guess would be that there would probably need to be some additional funding to do that. We can certainly kind of kick that around as a staff to try to determine what that amount will be. I think there's a broader issue that I think the council may want to give some thought to prior to the reconciliation process, which is how you assign responsibility and to which level of government. I'm not saying whether this is right or wrong, I would just say that at least the prior council's position had been that this was an issue that the city had carried for a while, and the prior council viewed that as more of a county responsibility. Certainly, a number from, a number of the workers visiting the current site appear to be residents of Belfort Towers, which is located in Prince George's County. So I'm not saying that all the city should not work in partnership, but I think one of the things that you do need to look at is where, what level of government do you think is the appropriate entity to be trying to fund a center, and how the council views that issue. Ultimately, it does become...
I think there's some advantage...
Yeah, I'm not saying what's right or wrong, I'm just saying, I think that is the issue from the staff's perspective.
And I think there is some benefit to the, to the city in helping to make that site, the new site, successful.
And if I can just add a comment from the point of view of the situation as it existed for many years, essentially, the city funded, provided funding, and was the only government entity to do so for about...
Several years.
Oh, I was going to say, seven or eight years. And every year that we did it, we kept hearing that it was just around the corner, that Montgomery County or Prince George's County was going to do something, and we said, well, we'll kind of keep going one more year because we want this to, you know, there needs to be something. And every year, they wouldn't do it, and we did more funding, and it just went on seemingly forever with only us.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I believe Montgomery County started providing funding, I think it definitely in oh seven, they were providing fifty percent funding, and I think they may have done the same in two thousand and six. My understanding is the city started operating a site and paying for it around two thousand, two thousand and one. I can confirm that, if Mayor Williams is correct, there were a number of years, it was just us.
And I think, and I think even before that site, we were still providing funding.
Okay. So anyway, that's, to me, that's just a policy issue the council may just want to think about as you move into the reconciliation process. I think in response to Councilmember Seaman's request, we can certainly give some thought to what might be needed if the council chooses to fund that expenditure, so we can at least have a dollar amount for you.
Thank you.
Sure, I had a couple of questions. One was, it goes back to something I was talking about, wind power. Is how electricity gets, is electricity in here somewhere for all the departments, or does that, does that end up in each department's budget already?
It actually shows up in the Public Works Department budget, which will be discussed on Monday evening, in response to your request for information, Councilmember Wright, I just gave it to the city clerk earlier this evening, is I did give her a memo for inclusion in Monday night's packet that provides some information on the council about the extent of wind power that we are currently purchasing, and at least our best estimate of what the financial impact might be, should the council wish to purchase additional wind power.
But all the electricity for all the departments ends up in Public Works Department here?
Right.
Okay.
More wind power, how?
It's apparently a significant question.
If we could just put some windmills right here in front of all of us, we'd have a lot of wind power. Exactly. And I realize some of these questions that I'm going to ask might be in the detailed information that you gave to us, and is up in my box, and I haven't looked at, which I very much appreciate. But in looking for ways to fund the reconciliation items that people are adding, I do have a couple of questions here. One is the employee recognition. It seems that, you know, your budget is seven thousand, or we budgeted seventy thousand last year, but we used about half that in the previous year. Is there some reason that you think we would use that much more this year? Is there particular festivals or celebrations?
No, that's actually on my list, truthfully, Councilmember Wright. I put in the amount that was requested by the HR manager, but because there was a kind of a disparity between what was budgeted, I was going to go back and do some historical checking, and to see if that number may be overly high. So we should be able to give that to you even on Monday.
Great. And then, the other was in the miscellaneous category. Is there, it's sort of also similar to, projected similar to what was adopted, but the estimate's much lower than the actual in oh seven, is much lower, so, and I realize you might not have that.
My recollection, and I can confirm this with Ms. Brooks, the general contingency account that I spoke about, which is mandated by the charter, it's a half a percent of revenues, actually gets captured in that general miscellaneous category. Most years, we have not spent that money. So I believe that's what the difference is, but I can certainly go back and confirm that.
Okay, thank you. Barb, was, when you asked Daryl to come up with the electricity numbers, did you ask her to have a trend? In other words, what did we spend on electricity this year, or last year, and the year before?
I have that information, I can certainly provide that to the council. I would say it's been going up, if you can bear with me one minute.
You know, what would be good would be not only the dollar amount, but the number of kilowatt-hours used. That would be excellent.
Yeah, I had, the memo that's going out with the packet tomorrow talks about the kilowatt-hours that we used for oh seven. She will be back Monday, I mean, she's coming back a little bit late, so I'll try to see if I can have that for you.
Okay, because that's, that's one way to measure our footprint, and that's a good way to try, something that we can think about to reduce.
Yeah, she, Daryl tracks data like nobody's business, so she probably has that.
She's always got it, all right.
And if I could just ask one final question that doesn't need an answer tonight, but will need a notation on the city manager's pad.
Yes, lovely tasking.
She needs to write it down. There was an interesting item yesterday at the Council of Governments Board meeting about some health insurance, the Council of Governments, whatever system they use, and they noted that a number of additional member governments had written on that contract, and that council, member governments had, a couple of them had recently joined that, including Gaithersburg. So I spoke with the couple of Gaithersburg officials last night and said, gee, interesting, you know, what changed? And the, and the answer basically was, gee, we were holding our, our health insurance year-to-year cost increases in the single digits, and then we found that it was getting increasingly hard to do that, and we were able to ride the COG contract and continue to do that. And so it brought to mind the question of, have we investigated whatever there might be with COG riders for insurance of whatever type that might afford some opportunities to save some money? I don't know.
Yeah, I have not looked into that. We can certainly, I'll be out of the office tomorrow, as you know, but I can certainly ask Suzanne to call the COG staff. We have met with our broker fairly recently and are trying to determine what recommendation to bring back to the council. I think, as the council may recall, we had included in the budget initially a fourteen percent increase. Our current carrier came back with fifteen, our broker got some other numbers, was, has been successful in getting that number down into the single digits. What I'm trying to weigh in terms of a recommendation to the council is, we do have some other vendors who have, you know, kind of offered to come in, and there's so many plan options in health insurance, it just makes your head swim. But in my experience, I'll say, sometimes when you change, somebody essentially lowballs to get your business, and then the next year basically turns around and makes up for it. So that, that can be very disruptive to our employees. I think at this point, we need to get back with our broker and kind of make a decision whether we want to bring in some other carriers to talk to. Certainly, I don't have any information on what COG's plan is, but we can certainly chuck into that. By some of, you know, at least one of our union contracts benefits are covered by that, so we do need to kind of take that into consideration in terms of how, what options we examine.
Yeah, it just, it brought up the question in my mind, if, if a number of these other, of our local colleagues were jumping onto this, there might be something there.
Yeah, I'd be happy to look at it. Sometimes, certainly, I mean, COG is more of a rider. I have worked in a number of cities that participated in municipal pools, which had kind of greater buying power, and truthfully, depending on, some jurisdictions, quite frankly, have more tenured workforces, if you will, and they certainly do look at the age of your employees in terms of establishing rates.
The, the, there were, I think, six or seven jurisdictions that were, that wrote that, and the two that stuck in my mind were Alexandria and Gaithersburg.
Okay, yeah, we'll be happy to look into that. Thank you for passing the suggestion along.
Bruce, can I just ask one question that came to mind? I was thinking about actually in a COG meeting, and when they also, but you reminded me of it. Is, you know the, the salary survey that HR is doing? Is that just look at hard dollars for salary, or is it a more comprehensive valuation of benefits? Because one of the things that I've experienced in the corporate world where companies make mistakes is, you know, one company might pay more in hard dollars, but less in the benefits package.
Right.
So you don't get a really good apples-to-apples comparison, because you should be comparing all the different aspects of how people are compensated.
I'll confirm that with Karen Hampton, Councilmember Wright. I know initially, it was looking at certain benchmark positions to help upgrade the city's overall salary structure itself, which is more sheer salary dollars. We do check, truthfully, as part of our, just general information and as part of our union negotiation process, quite frankly, looking at what other benefit structures are. We participate in surveys with other jurisdictions. So I'm not sure if it's specifically covered by the SLAVEN contract, I'll check that with Ms. Hampton, but we do check that information from time to time, just for our own benefit.
Do we, I'm just out of curiosity, do we cover all the costs associated with, with health insurance?
We do for the individual employee. For most of the employees, there is a kind of a cost share arrangement if they elect to have any type of dependent coverage. We actually have sort of a three-tier dependent coverage structure, which is fairly common, so there, you can cover your spouse, you can cover your children, if your spouse has other covers, just your children alone, or the full family unit is obviously the most expensive option.
Our final item is debt service?
It should be really easy, because it's probably the one part of the budget that you all have no control over, quite frankly. We're already obligated, and you gotta pay. Included in your agenda packet, as well as your binder, it's essentially the same information, just for your edification, I guess, is sort of the breakdown of the different types of the city's, the debt that the city has, kind of what those repayment schedules look like, or debt service schedules. You'll probably note that the city's debt is sort of a combination of, there are some capital leases, which are, I think, more short-term obligations, and then you have very long-term general obligation bonds, particularly on, on the community center work that was done. Probably one of the good news on the horizon, despite this gloomy budget season, is that the, we have a, an agreement with Montgomery County where we have a certain amount of our tax duplication payment, which is essentially a deduct for improvements, infrastructure improvements that were made in the Pinecrest area. We essentially have been operating under an interest-free loan, and essentially, there's been a fifty-five thousand dollar deduct since fiscal year two thousand from what the city gets in its tax duplication payments. In oh nine, we will finally satisfy that obligation, so in oh ten, in two thousand and ten, we'll actually get our tax duplication payments hopefully bumped up at least by this amount. One thing I would just mention is, we have talked about the public works facility, and obviously, the council, I imagine, will be having more extensive discussions about that project on Monday night. I have assumed, with the exception of design, that that project would be debt-financed. The way that would probably happen is that the debt would be structured, so there would be no debt service payment in two thousand and nine. So even though we would receive the bond proceeds, we could actually structure the payment, so it doesn't hit until two thousand and ten. I've talked to the state local government infrastructure financing board, which is where the city and a lot of municipalities sometimes coordinate their debt through. Just to get some ballpark figures, obviously, we don't know what we'll be borrowing, and more importantly, we don't know what interest rates will be, and certainly, we'd probably want to have some discussions about the term of that debt. They ran some schedules for me, assuming that, you know, we were able to keep the project in the two million dollar range, and I just assumed, you know, just for my own benefit, a ten-year payback schedule for that debt. We would probably be on, looking at current interest rates of annual payments for ten years of about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars on the public works facility, just to give you an idea of what that might look like starting in two thousand and ten. So even though it's not in this budget, I did just want to, it was flagged in the transmittal message, but did just want to mention that to you all. So as you kind of consider that project and truthfully think beyond two thousand and nine, in terms of what some of the financial issues are that the city may be facing or dealing with, that would certainly be one of them. So I think the, the information included in the budget binder is pretty self-explanatory. Like I say, it's just more to tell you when you might actually have some of the debt paid off, and, you know, there's a few things that are coming to, obviously, one of the Obviously, one of the other ones is the city had borrowed money, I think right around the, the year I started, which was in fiscal 2005, to basically play catch-up on some of its streets. That was a relatively short-term obligation and that will be, you know, paid off in 2012. So there are some of this debt that will be coming off within the next few years.
Which I'll remind colleagues who may know or colleagues who don't know, that we did that street bond because we became convinced that it was going to cost us less to do it that way and front-load the costs than to just pay as you go and pay the increasing costs over time. That's the reason, that was the reason why we did that particular debt. Questions or observations? We're turned.
Okay, great.